We're working on it, Mary Ann. I wanted to do photographs along with the names and descriptions.
That's good.
So we're gonna get it by next time, we're gonna have it, I promise.
Okay, I'm beating the gavel. The meeting will come to order. The time is stopped 30:00 PM on Monday, April 19th. This is a regular monthly meeting of the DC Commission on Arts and Humanities, held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act and using the Cisco WebEx virtual meeting platform. I am Kay Kendall, Chair of the Commission. Now our call roll. Alma? Alma Gates? You may be muted, so please check. Please do mute, but when I call your name, make sure you're not muted. So Alma, are you here? Yes, I see you. Even if I can't hear. Carla, I know is maybe listening, but she's on her way to the airport, so I know she'll be coming, listening in. Cece? Cora?
Yes.
Thank you. Derek?
Yes.
Thank you. Gretchen? Jose? Hector?
Yes.
Maggie? I see you. Okay. Mariah?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Here.
Natalie? Rona?
Here.
Thank you. Stacy?
Present.
Thank you, Quanise.
I'm on permission.
Did I hear Quanise say present?
Yes.
Thank you. Jose? And Cece? Okay, we've got a call. Before we proceed, I would like to read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hope, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on ancestral lands with the K'ch'tank and the Piskatawi people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. When I read that, I always think of you, Quanise. I want to thank you for bringing that to us. The agenda for this meeting has been circulated to all commissioners. Are there any objections to the agenda as it stands? Hearing no objections, the agenda stands as adopted. Approval of the minutes. They have been circulated to all the commissioners. Are there any objections to the minutes as they have been circulated from the last meeting? Hearing no corrections or objections, the minute stand is approved. It's a public comment period. I don't know if there's anyone here from the public to comment. Is there? There wasn't earlier today. Okay. Then I have a few announcements to make before we call on Heron. I just want to shout out to Heron. Since our last meeting, we have had our public performance hearing. And Terrell Mendelson was very attentive. He asked us terrific questions. But Heron really was very thoughtful and intelligent and answered everything so well and with such poise. I just wanted everyone who happened maybe not to have watched it, they can rest that with our agency looked really good. He represented us very, very well. Also, I think one of the great pluses of the COVID times and Zooming and quarantining has been these public art workshops. And I just want to really give an extra thank you to the team. I think we've all said it, we'll probably say it many more times, but the workshops have been fantastic. And because of Zoom, we've been able to reach a wide audience, and I think that's been wonderful for us. Yes, it's been great. I also want to announce that Quanise Floyd is our new Chair of the newly formed Idea Committee. The group has had one meeting, another is planned soon, and is off to a very good start. I know they'll be on the agenda, and you'll hear from them when the time is appropriate. Finally, you will get a notice from me, but we want to have a special meeting for discussion of the strategic plan. It seemed too much to put it on the agenda today since we have a public art strategic plan also. That could just be overwhelming. So we're gonna set aside time for a special meeting for that next Monday at 5:30. I think that it may not take a long, long time. We can allow an hour for that. And I will send you a notice and a link for that meeting, and I hope you can attend. That is it. Now, Heron, for you and your executive's committee report, I mean, your executive's director report.
Thank you so much, Kay, and thank you for your generous compliments, as you know, and good evening, everyone. I, anything that comes my way by way of acknowledgement of work definitely goes through to the team. We have a very team of folks that help with the preparations and the, you know, sort of coaching and back and forth for the performance hearing. So I extend your generous compliment to the entire team and all of staff. So thank you. I thought I would just do a quick zip through the, my report, just to share some highlights. The, we've been going steadily through some organizational development sessions with the Center for Learning and Development from DCHR, the unit that focuses on providing these trainings. They, and it's really an attempt to begin to intentionally build a culture, a culture of collaborative work, a culture of trust at the agency. We've gone through about six or seven sessions so far. There's going to be about 10 that we've planned on. And then between April and June, we're going to also begin a 360-degree evaluation process for department heads to really, you know, sort of focus on building leadership, a leadership core at the agency. We've engaged the National Art Strategies to work with one-on-one coaches to do the same, sort of cultivate leadership at the core. So things are going well. There's really good feedback on some of these sessions that we're hearing from staff. And so we will be continuing on through these. Most of the sessions will be done by about June of this year. Our FY22 grants and public arts programs are about to roll out. We will be doing a public-facing overview session online, virtually, on May 7th from 10:00 to 12:00 PM. Most of our grant managers will be presenting overviews of their programs and answering questions. And then, beginning then and until the end of the summer, we'll be heavily, heavily engaged with workshops and and then later on, at the beginning of the summer, with panels and grants programs, you know, sort of fielding questions from applicants and providing resources for those who wishing to apply for our grants. As Kay mentioned, our community engagement efforts have gone really well. We have rolled out quite a series of them on these three tracks. The CAH in the community, the Artist Showcase, and the Business of the Arts tracks. A lot of them are really well attended. We are actually closer to the 1,800 mark at this point with people really participating, providing good feedback, and sharing ideas about what they'd like to see with this programming. I suspect even after we go back to being in the office and doing things in person, that we would be continuing the online options of doing these programs because we're reaching a whole lot of people this way. So we're gonna look into ways that we can maintain this aspect of community engagement after the pandemic lifts. The other quick highlight would be that both our Public Art Master Plan, they'll be, our consultants will be presenting today, and the strategic plan will be our looking to gear up to do the public comment period late April, early May. And so, you know, we'll be engaging the community in a different way through these public comment periods. We'll also be hearing from the NDA towards the end of this month and early next on the American Recovery Plan and what funding might be available for us as a state arts agency to share with our artists and arts organizations here in the district. I'll stop there and see if there might be questions. Okay, thank you so much. I'll stop there.
Okay. We'll have a finance update. Has Cece joined us? Yes, I see her name. Hi, Cece.
I'm here. I didn't see a finance report in the packet, so I was just wondering if Brian, oh, there it is. Was that sent out? I just, I wasn't sure.
It was not. Good evening, everyone. This is Bronny Andy speaking. So to answer your question, Cece, no, it was not. As you can see, the date, the reports were ran, were actually today. I believe I was away from the office on Thursday when the information was sent out to the commissioners. So it's my apology. It's on me.
No worries. Thank you. Since we didn't get a chance to review, is there anything that we should be made aware of, or that, anything new to report?
There's nothing new to report from the perspective of the budget still remains the same for fiscal year '21 in terms of $38.7 million. I believe at some point in this presentation, we'll get into, or there'll be a presentation with regards to how the remainder of the funding, of the grant funding will be disseminated. So I really don't have anything to report there. What's most important that I would like to report is that we are now up to 727 grants that have been authorized for disbursement. And of the 727 grants, 629 of them are either in process or have been issued. So to break that down, of the 629, 623 grants were issued to the grantees, which leaves us with six that are currently going through the approval process and the remaining 98, which the bulk of them are the Fab relief grants that was recently approved. So we should begin to see some of the Fab relief grantees, grants being awarded as well.
I have a question. Brian, is, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at line 50. Does that mean that the $31 million is what we have in the grants budget?
That is correct.
And that of that, still to be dispersed is either the 11 or the nine, I'm sorry, tiny print.
Okay, if you.
So we've spent everything except for nine million?
Okay, so how the columns work, that would be correct. The amount that's currently available that's not encumbered or not obligated is 9.7 million, or 9,733,474. But again, as I stated a few minutes ago, there'll be a presentation that will address a good portion of that funding and what's happening next.
Thanks. But I do think it's good for us to see what a large budget we had, how much has gone, and that's what's left to talk about.
Yes, ma'am.
And thanks. I wanted to make sure.
And Kay, if I may jump in, it's also worth saying that the, you know, the late grant programs, fab facilities and buildings, haven't quite processed through. So some of this money is already spoken for through those grant programs.
Right.
But we'll talk in more detail as we drill down, yeah.
Anything else? Any questions, or Brian or Cece, anything else?
The only other thing that I wanted to report with regards to, from a finance perspective, is the fiscal year '22 budget. Normally, around this time of the year, the budget has normally been transmitted to the council for markup and the actual budget hearings. This year, it's a little bit different. From what I'm understanding, the correspondence that's gone out is the budget is not due to be transmitted to the council until late May, early June. And so the budget hearings will begin in June, which is probably going to be a very quick turnaround period. So because of the uncertainty with the budget at this point, there will be another round of revenue forecasts that will have an impact on the fiscal year '22 budget. And so for those reasons, we are not, we are unable to discuss at this point with any certainty the funding levels for CAH.
Okay, we'll just wait and see. Thanks. Cece, is there anything else from you?
No, thank you.
Then we'll go to public art. Alma? Thank you. Yes. Can you hear me? Very well, yes. Yes. The Public Art Committee is pleased to share a draft preliminary summary of the Public Art Plan. Before the presentation is turned over to Todd Bressi and via partnership colleagues, I want to read a passage from the draft that describes the outcomes and goals for public art. In order to move forward, the CAH Public Art Program must be able to articulate where it wants to head. First step is to articulate outcomes and goals for the CAH Public Art Program. Outcomes describe the broad overall impacts that CAH Public Art activities should have when this plan is implemented. That is, how will CAH impact the way that public art is created in the district? How will CAH impact the way that people will experience public art? We have identified five key outcomes, which are discussed. A more equitable public art landscape, a strong public art ecosystem, a vibrant public realm, strengthened cultural, economic, and social fabric in communities, and a more fully engaged public. So I am now going to turn the presentation over to Todd and let him introduce his colleagues and proceed with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner, for that introduction. And thank you to the Chair for making time for us on your agenda this evening, and to all of you for your time this evening.
Just excuse me for a second. Patrick, Todd is going to share the documents.
Would that be okay, Patrick? I can share mine.
So he has a, he has a document that he's presenting. Thank you.
That's fine.
Sorry about that, Todd. Go ahead.
It's okay. It's okay. Can you all see? My presentation?
Yes, very pretty.
Yes, very nice.
I can't claim any responsibility for that. That's your work. But, so again, thank you all, and thanks for your time this evening. If I might, could someone tell me how much time you would like to allocate to this agenda item so we can kind of plan our discussion accordingly? What time do you think we?
I mean, I, I mean, I'm thinking 15 or 20 minutes. It just. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, I will move quickly. So our agenda this evening is to introduce ourselves, to describe the process we've gone through to date, and then discuss, as Commissioner already did, outcomes and goals for public art that we are, would like to propose, and also to discuss some strategies for public art as well. I believe you've all received two documents. One is a draft of an executive summary of the plan. And the second is a series of charts, which have very, charts which have very detailed strategies and actions that we're recommending the program consider. And then we'll discuss what we do next to wrap up the project. So briefly, I'm Todd Bressi. I'm based in Philadelphia. I grew up outside of Washington DC in Prince George's County. I am an independent public art consultant. I work full-time advising public agencies, arts organizations, other nonprofits, and the private sector on art strategies to help, for people who are interested in using art strategies to improve their communities. I work on both plans and implement projects, and I work throughout the country. I'm here this evening with Via Partnership. In the interest of time, I hope you won't mind, I'll just introduce them. On the call today, meeting today are Meredith McKinley and Emily Blumenfeld. Meredith is based in St. Louis. Emily is based in New York. They are, two of their associates, Eliza Schiff and Angie Via, have also been working on this project. Via Partnership is an art consulting firm as well that works with private and public sector organizations to develop and implement public art strategies. Together, we collaborated on the 2009 Public Art Master Plan for the Commission on Arts and Humanities. Both our firms are actively working throughout the District Maryland-Virginia area, again, for public and private clients, and we're pleased to have the opportunity to work with you again. We're also working with Susan Jenkins, the CEO of the Arts and Humanities Council of Montgomery County, who's advising us on grant approaches, idea issues, and and purpose collection issues for collections such as the art bank. We're also working with Howard Wellman, a conservator based in Maryland, who's advising us on conservation, maintenance, and deaccession policies. And that is the team we have working on this project. It's been 10 years since the Commission on Arts and Humanities had a plan done for its public art program. And there are a lot of reasons for updating it. In the last decade, we have seen the city grow immensely in terms of its residential development and its workforce and in the way that different demographics are spread throughout the city. Commission's become an independent agency. It's moved from the deputy mayor's, out of the deputy mayor's office. And public art activities have focused more on grant programs than direct commissions in the last decade. And currently, the agency is updating its strategic plan, as was mentioned. We'll be coordinating with those consultants. We have already begun talking with them to make sure that we give you a consistent picture of future of the commission and the public art program. Commission's funds have shifted from capital dollars to operating dollars, which is perhaps the most significant change in the last decade in terms of its operations. Also, more and more city agencies are developing their own public art capacities to implement their own public art programs because they think it's important to their mission. As well, independent organizations such as Main Streets, Business Improvement Districts have improved their capacity to create public art as well. Overall, in the country, the practice of public art, what artists do and how they do it, has changed incredibly in the last decade. There's new ideas about civic practice, social practice, creative place-making. And those, they are really all driven by artists who have a much, have a very vigorous sense of engagement with the world. So those are all reasons to think about the Commission's public art program. I'd be remiss to say, if I didn't say, that the plan also comes at a time when the COVID-19 pandemic, the forefronting of racial justice issues, and the 2020 election have brought to light many of the underlying injustices and inequities in our country. Access to public services, systemic racism, and full and free participation in governance. Those are all issues that are in sharp relief, particularly in the District of Columbia. And it's important for the Arts and Humanities and public art programs to grapple with these issues and provide leadership in communities that are addressing these issues. It's a very important time to be thinking about the future of public art. The process began last, late last summer, in July. We really began in earnest in the fall with a research and engagement process, which we'll describe in more detail in a moment. That lasted about four or five months. And really, in the spring, we began to synthesize all of our findings and issued a few internal reports to commission staff, public art staff, in a preliminary assessment phase. And with that feedback, we also have been working with the Public Art Committee at that stage. And with that feedback, have prepared this draft summary and recommendations that we're discussing with you tonight. Going forward, we have an aggressive plan to complete this project by the end of June. As was mentioned, not long after this meeting, we will post a draft of the plan for public comment. We will then circle back to all the stakeholder groups we have consulted with to get their comments on the draft plan. The public comment period will end in late May. We will prepare a final draft by early June and present that to the Public Art Committee and to the commission at your June meetings. And hopefully, that will, that will enable us to finish this project by the end of June. We have to thank the staff, Lauren and her team, for their strong support in helping us, helping us meet these goals. The research phase of the project looked at a lot of documentation, both internal to the public art program and also external into our field. We looked at, we analyzed the granting patterns of the public art program. We looked at best practices for grant programs for portable collections or art bank-type collections, as well as conservation and maintenance planning, particular issues that the public art team was interested in us focusing on. We studied many of the city plans, the comprehensive plan, area plans, plans from different agencies, as well as cultural plans and policies, and in particular initiatives other city agencies have for public art, such as the public libraries, the art plan that the public library program, our department, has created. Our engagement focused largely on key stakeholders for the, for the public art program. And we used several techniques. We contacted artists and curators who've received grants through different programs with questionnaires that provided perhaps 10 open-ended questions that allowed them to comment on their projects and their experience in working with the commission. We conducted individual interviews with applicants across the grant programs the public art program has, some, including applicants who are not selected for projects, to get their impression of what working with the commission has been like. We interviewed city partners as well and all of the city agencies that the public art program works with. We had five focus groups with Main Street organizations, Business Improvement Districts. We had several focus groups with artists and one with Arts and Culture organizations. Those were small group roundtables, anywhere between 10 and 20 people, where we had an hour and a half to two-hour conversations about their work and how they saw themselves interacting with the commission. The process focused on a couple of key planning questions, essential questions, which is how is the public art program interacting with and impacting the public art ecosystem? That is, the network of artists, of curators, of organizations, of public agencies who are interested in working with public art. How is the commission, how is the commission's public art program impacting how people in the city engage with public art? People who live in the city, people who work there, people who visit. And how is the commission's public art activities advancing equity in the work that it does and in the city overall? We found there are a lot of assets for this program to. We found there are a lot of assets for this program to build on. Its grant its granting approach to funding projects inherently empowers artists, curators, organizations to develop projects based on the priorities and ideas they identify. That is extremely rare in the public art field for a program to provide so many of its resources to the ideas that are brought to it by its community. The program has a lot of flexibility to work with city agencies in an advisory role where to help them implement public art projects. The program staff have learned is knowledgeable, and it's well-respected in the other agencies and with the organizations that it works with. The funding levels are quite strong. Again, compared to your peer organizations in similarly sized cities, the the funding levels are quite healthy. The Art Bank Collection is an extraordinary resource. It truly is. And every time we look at it, it's just amazing to see what its holdings are and how they chronicle the history of artists in the region and the different movements and accomplishments. And as was mentioned a little earlier, I think by Haran, the there's been virtual public art programming this spring, which we've attended most of those, and they have been well-attended and quite substantive. They're quite impressive programs that we've seen. So the program has a lot to commend itself for and a strong base to build on. Whenever we start a project, we look to what are the big ideas that we can build on? What is the purpose of this program? What what is its vision for how it will impact the city? We were directed really to focus on two ideas. One is the enabling legislation for the commission, which is somewhat broad but gives room for the public art program and flexibility for the public art program to operate. And we particularly appreciate the language in their initiate action. We think that's an important, important mindset to keep in mind, action related to arts and culture. The second idea or big idea we were asked to keep in mind was the work that's being done right now by the Idea Task Force, which we we understand as one of the top priorities of the commission. And so we were given background on this task force and shown some shown some of the work it's done, including definitions of inclusion, diversity, equity, and access. We've read the recommendations that the task force came up with and incorporated them really by reference into the recommendations we are making. And we noticed that some of the recommendations are moving forward already, particularly in terms of how applicants have to think about the the projects they're proposing and their own operations in order when they're applying for for grants from the commission. So these are the two big ideas. The the notion that the the commission and the public art program can play an active role in shaping the future of arts and culture in the city and that the very high priority right now is are the idea issues that you are that you are working on. We begin our and our synthesis of what we learn by thinking about how the public art program interacts with its stakeholders and with the community at large. And we really identified six, what we call key lenses, through which we through which the commission can understand how its public art program interacts with the city's public art ecosystem and how it impacts the city. We really were thinking hard in an outward kind of way about how the program impacts the city. These these lenses focus on the constituencies the program serves, such as artists, curators, community organizations, agencies, residents, workers, and visitors, as well as the visual context for the program and the urban context for the program. An additional lens, equity or idea, cuts across all of these topics, which we'll discuss that as well in a minute. These are really the beginning points of talking about how the public art program should operate, about the impacts, goals, and strategies for its for its activities. By keeping these lenses in mind, we think the commission can keep an empathetic mind toward the needs of its stakeholder groups and proactively identify opportunities for collaborations and catalytic initiatives. So again, it's worth mentioning in a moment what these groups are. Artists and curators are really the people who create and present public art. These are the folks who are making the project, identifying projects and making them happen. And it's important to understand what the full needs of that community are. Arts and community organizations are also in the forefront of identifying and and making projects happen. One of the things to note is while there are many organizations that apply for grants and get grants and implement projects, and that they're distributed throughout the city, there are large areas of the city that don't really have access to this resource, strong organizations. And that's a gap that needs to be considered. Agency partnerships, many city agencies, as I said, are embracing public art as a tool. There could be a need for stronger coordination and collaboration and leadership from the commission among its its among other city agencies in 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 advancing public art practice in the city. The fourth, the final stakeholder group is is audiences, people who live in, work in, or visit the city. There's two key ways to think about how public art interacts with with audiences. One is in the creation of projects, community participation and engagement, and then how people have access to the public art that's created, whether it's traditional public art or the Art Bank resources. How do people learn about it, encounter it, engage with it, and and benefit from having it? There are two types of legacies. Again, the urban design legacy relates a lot to the strong urban design traditions that the District of Columbia has. This is not a backward-looking legacy. It's a forward-looking legacy. The city's urban plans really provide a lot of opportunities for identifying future projects that other agencies have already begun to think about in locations that are visible, that are integrated with the city's public life, and really spread throughout the city. That's the key. But thinking about the urban design opportunities, the commission will be able to find opportunities for public art in every ward of the city. Finally, the artistic legacy. We cannot say enough about how invaluable the Art Bank is. It's important to maintain that legacy. It's important to build on that legacy. And it's important to make that legacy an inspiration for the future creative life of the city. Now, here's the part where we already heard, we got a sneak preview of this part of the plan. I appreciated that very much. As as was said, to move forward, you have to know where you're going. And so we're proposing five key outcomes for the public art for the public art program. The first has to do with the more equitable public art landscape. This is a key priority of the commission. As I mentioned, the work of the task force, based on feedback we receive from stakeholders, the commission create a more can create a more equitable public art landscape by focusing on four areas: the breadth of participation in public art resources, the geographic distribution of resources, the cultural representation in the projects it commissions or acquires or artworks that it acquires, and the way that decisions are made. And so for each of these outcomes, we also are listing a series of goals for the program. And what you'll find, I'll take applause here and say, we have outcomes, the big idea on the left. We have a series of goals. And then you'll note in the other materials we sent you, we've identified strategies and specific actions for each of these goals. So it's a highly organized set of recommendations. In terms of the public art ecosystem, again, we recognize that the commission interacts with a wide range of artists, arts professional organizations, and city agencies altogether, which we call the public art ecosystem. The commission works primarily through grants and relies on stakeholders' proposed projects. Therefore, the effectiveness of the commission is enhanced or accelerated by the by the range of ideas it can attract, the ideas that people bring to the table. But its limitation is the capacity those organizations have. Therefore, it's important for the commission to focus on building the breadth and depth of stakeholders who have the capacity to create public art, to help develop ideas with communities and bring them to the table so that so that the commission can address the full the needs and the full diversity of the community. And again, there are a number of specific goals we've proposed. Vibrant public realm. Again, the public realm in Washington DC is many-layered, from the grand civic and federal places to the streetscapes, parks, and spaces that people experience in their everyday lives. Several city agencies have a strong focus on building a vibrant public realm. The planning, CCOP and DDOT, and several city plans, such as the urban design element of the comprehensive plan, provide detailed guidance on how to move forward. It's important for the commission to focus on the everyday public realm, the places that people who live and work in the city experience, from downtown streetscapes, neighborhood corridors, community parks, pocket parks, metro station plazas, squares. And it should stat and it should strengthen its collaboration with agencies, again, DDOT, DPR, and CCOP that plan for and manage these spaces. And again, we've outlined several specific goals to to aim for. Strengthen cultural, economic, and social fabric, just as the physical fabric of the city is important. We all know the human fabric of the city is important as well. The cultural history of the community, its economic activity, and the social strength of the community. So public art should also focus on the transformational impact it can have on those aspects of the city. This means developing ways to work to support participatory processes, community-building outcomes, along with traditional public art outputs. One of the key recommend goals here is to expand the kinds of partnerships the public art program has from traditional physically-oriented organizations like Business Improvement Districts to service organizations that provide human services, linking them with artists and arts organizations as well, and public art and public art processes. Finally, a more fully engaged public. Again, there are two important ways to think about this in terms of how the public is involved in creating public art and how the public or the community experiences public art. The overall goal is for public art to be a vital part of everyone's creative life in the city. The commission works through several strategies, and we're really not recommending any new strategies. We're just suggesting how the strategies the the public art program uses now can be expanded, adapted, tweaked, in order to meet the ideas and opportunities we've identified. The core, overall, we think that the public art program should consider developing a more robust and carefully-integrated toolkit of strategies, incrementally and proactively expanding some activities and focusing others strategically on key gaps that are identified. In terms of community-based grants, which largely means public art building communities, this is the main tool the public art program has used to fund public art installations. I've described how it's unique. But we're investigating how the program could update, how the public art program could upgrade this grant, this grant program, adding new categories perhaps, adjusting its processes to better meet stakeholder needs, addressing issues we've we've learned about in terms of the timeframes in which applicants have to do their work and the capacity of artists and communities to work as grant recipients. Direct commissions. Over the past decade, the commission has cut back the number of direct commissions it's undertaken, but it has done a few commissioned a few artworks, particularly at the request of other city agencies. We think direct commissions can actually be a very useful tool in helping achieve some of the outcomes and goals we've 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 mentioned, such as filling gaps that are not being addressed by other stakeholders and providing carefully-targeted opportunities for new artists to enter public art practice. This might mean working in parts of the city where there are not organizations actively commissioning public art. It might mean developing challenges to create art in places or around themes that are not being proposed by by grant applicants. Acquisitions. By that, we are again referring to largely to the Art Bank, but also to public art commissions. The Art Bank in particular reflects important artistic movements. It encapsulates a record of the city's creative history. And again, it provides access to the collection primarily for people who visit city office buildings. This strategy is a good one. It should be continued, focusing on ensuring that acquisitions always are reflecting the full creative voice and practices of the city, taking risks on different kinds of artists, implementing sound collection management practices, and providing broader public access, both through the exhibition of original artworks, but also through other kinds of exhibition strategies online or through reproductions. Whoops, I'm sorry. Over the past decade, many partnerships, many city agencies have recognized that public art is a tool to help them achieve their missions, and they have entered into partnerships with with the Commission on Arts and Humanities. Here, we think that there is an opportunity, not simply to react to what other agencies are bringing to the table, but to seek out agencies to enter into partnerships that will help achieve goals that the commission has, again, filling gaps in the needs of the community. Also, leading with resources, professional resources, educational resources, networking resources that help artists, agencies, independent organizations connect around around the public art projects. And finally, programs. As I mentioned, it's been highly successful, CAH and the Community Series this spring. There are opportunities to build on this, not only through future program of that sort, but also through efforts that are more specifically targeted in their subject area or their approach. Hopefully, one day, there can be tours, workshops, trainings, in which people have opportunities to learn about specific aspects of the public art collection or certain aspects of the field, as well as best practice guides, resources, and one-on-one consultations with new and applicants. Again, like new commissions, the expansion of programming should be specifically and strategically targeted to the goals and needs identified in the plan. Excuse me. Finally, the plan discusses several administrative strategies, starting with funding. Again, the the amount of funding the public art program receives is is quite strong compared to its peers. But how it can use the funding is an issue to be worked on. Some of the suggestions we are exploring are breaking grants into smaller parts that can be accomplished over smaller grants that can be applied for and obtained over multiple years so that people have more time to do projects. Exploring a funding mechanism for public art commissions that allow the program to to fill gaps that it sees. Exploring more aggressively external grants that have more that that would provide funding that is more flexible for special initiatives. In terms of staffing, the public art staff, as I mentioned, operates at a very high level. It's been organized to manage a variety of grant programs and to manage the growing Art Bank collections. The recommendations in this plan would add require additional capacity, in particular for managing direct public art commissions, increase public engagement, and enhance conservation and management work. This capacity could be provided through new staff, consulting support, or some combination. A another topic, administrative topic is data, information. Several of the equity goals identified in this plan would seek to address imbalances in access to a distribution of resources. In order to understand where those imbalances are and how to address them, the public art program should develop a better database of who's applying, who they are, where they are from, to understand who is who is able to apply for grants, who is obtaining grants, and who isn't. The collection, in terms of collection management, that the commission manages is extraordinary. The staff has put together a very aggressive and a very strong collection management recommendations, which will lay the groundwork for more robust maintenance and conservation of the collection. It's important to care consider those carefully and adopt them to support the creation of an ongoing conservation and maintenance plan and to clarify responsibility for maintenance of projects that are grant-funded as well as artworks on private property. Finally, communications. That is a important in that the public art collection is a vital cultural asset. The staff, the public arts. The staff, the public arts, the communication staff should work together to create overarching and project-specific communications plans to strengthen the identity of the Public Art Program and the Art Bank Collection. Is, you know, for example, when the National Endowment for the Arts commissions a project, you have no doubt that the NEA has been involved. It's important for the Public Art Program's profile to be that high, to be as high as that, that to look for ways to expand public access to experience the collection and to develop strong communication strategies for each grant round in order to help attract as many applicants and as diverse a pool of applicants as possible. And to carry that strategy through the, the creation of the artwork, the public engagement that goes on with it, and the unveiling of the artwork, kind of holistic communication strategy. We won't show you slides up, but this is an example of what the actions, a chart looks like. It reviews the outcomes, the goals, the strategies, and then the five columns on the right are various, are lists of very specific actions that the Public Art Program can undertake to help, to help achieve those. And we're happy to, those have been circulated to you, and we're happy to discuss them if you'd like. I already reviewed the next steps, but it's here again, in case you'd like to revisit that again. The overall goal is to complete our work by, by June 30th. With that, I will, I will wrap up. I'll thank you for your patience in sitting through the presentation and for your interest in looking at our materials and in helping shape the future of the program. And we're all here with the Public Art Team to answer questions and have a discussion about your thoughts about, about the future of the Public Art Program. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Todd. Thank you. You really, that was excellent, excellent presentation. Does Alma, do you want to, do you have any comments right now?
I don't, I don't know if Lauren does.
Just to thank Todd, just to thank Todd and Meredith and Emily and his full team for their diligence and hard work on this. And at this point, I guess if the Commission, you know, if anybody, the Commissioners have questions or comments, maybe this would be the time.
I want to open it up if anyone does have a comment or question. Jose?
Well, I just wanted to say, congratulations. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I just wanted to say, congratulations to Todd and team. I know that we spent a lot of time, both in our art, Public Art Committee, and also personally when I was interviewed, because everybody knows how opinionated I am. But, so, but I love our public art. I love our city. And, you know, in listening to what you said and, and what you wrote and what is in the draft proposal, you guys, you and your team did really listen to all of us. And, I mean, and thank you for helping us do this. You did touch on the idea, which is important, and on partnerships and tooting our own horns and all of that. So, thank you for an amazing draft that will be now open for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Kendo. I just wanted to acknowledge Lauren's strong leadership. I think the thing, if you have an opportunity to read through the detailed action plan that's part of this overall strategic plan, it's very substantive and quite good. So, I think there's a lot that we can expect, and it does involve, it does evolve the public arts programming in a really interesting and dynamic way. So, I just wanted to acknowledge Lauren's good leadership and thank her for her efforts in guiding this to where we are.
I agree. Thank you, Maggie, very much. And Mariah?
Thank you.
I saw you. Raise your hand, Mariah?
I did. Thank you. I just want to say that, that you all, that your team, Todd, was incredibly thoughtful in the way that you approached this project. And you have fabulous thoughts in, in the way that we can be inclusive, more inclusive, and more equitable in the way that we approach public art and have just given us so many ideas around that idea that I'm really, really impressed with your work. And I'm grateful. Thank you so much.
I have to smile because about four years ago, maybe five, Mariah was tasked with trying to organize a public art plan. So, I think that of all the people on this call, she deeply appreciates the work you took on and how thorough you were and how well it's turned out. It makes me smile to think that we thought we could do it without you. So, it's been a real pleasure to have you as the team leading this group. Does anyone else have any comment or question? Well, I don't see any, and I think that's just a testimony to the fact that you've done such a thorough, smart job. There's a lot of material here. I'm so grateful to have this plan, but particularly grateful for the hour of facing proactive initiatives you suggested that we take to hit all neighborhoods and create more public art on our own initiative. I think that's an important role that we haven't fully embraced. So, just thank you so much. We look forward to the final, final plan.
Well, thank you all for those, those kind words. We appreciate them very much. And again, it's been said, but Lauren and her team have been a great support in helping us get here, as well as the Commissioners we've worked with in the Public Art Committee. So, thank you all too.
Thanks. That's a great feeling of accomplishment. So, thank you. So, to go to the next item on our agenda, we have Gretchen and the Grants Committee.
Can everyone hear me? I am having serious WebEx challenges. I actually have you logged in on my phone and on the computer in case something drops off.
We can hear you.
Very well, very well.
Okay, we have money. We have an extra $5 million that I'm going to ask you to vote on today. I'm going to ask you to vote on three particular components of it. We may have even a little more money from NEA, but we won't know that for the next month or two. So, if we can put up the first slide, there it goes. Of the $5 million that we have to allocate spending now, we are recommending that the relief grant for individuals goes to two, is $2 million. We're recommending that $2.5 million goes for organizational relief. And we are recommending that the leftover $700,000 be carried forth into FY22 for some programs. So, let me go back to the first part, which is $2 million for the relief grant for individuals. As you recall, we did do this particular kind of grant earlier in the year, but we did it by lottery. So, many people fell out or they weren't able to get their, their applications in on time, and there were some disappointed people. So, we're going to try to fix that this time. The relief grant for individuals, the $2 million, would be to existing individual grantees and new individual artists and humanities practitioners. It would be a lean application, meaning one or two pages, would be created, giving a range of options to determine applicant eligibility. The application would be opened for two weeks in late June. Prior to that, we will be having workshops, four workshops would be offered to help ensure applicants have everything they need to submit successfully. What we ran into before were there so many people that are in need of this money, especially the individuals, don't have the capacity, whether it be equipment or, or assistance or whatever, to work with our portal, and I've tried working with it myself, and it's not the easiest thing in the world, to get their applications in. So, we're going to have four workshops to help the individuals get their applications in. What I'm going to be asking you to vote on is one of two things that's highlighted here in yellow. One, to fund all eligible applicants by dividing the monies available equally between them. These are applicants who, whose applications actually are found to be deemed eligible. Obviously, not everybody who turns in an application is going to have an eligible application for whatever reason. Last time, we had some from Maryland, Virginia. There were just a number of things. But of all of the eligible applications, we want to divide this $2 million between them. For instance, if we receive maybe 2,000 of these applications and maybe 1,000 are, are found to be eligible, hopefully there'll be more than that, then each would receive $2,000. That's option one. Option two would be choose a total number of eligible applicants to fund and determine awardees based on a lottery system, which is what we had before, rather than on a first come, first served basis. We did the first come, first served, and there are questions about that. We did the lottery piece. There are questions about that. We discussed this in the Grants Committee, and the Grants Committee also consisted of CC attending and Quanice attending also. So, it wasn't just the Grants Committee plus. So, what I need, Kay, how do you want to handle this vote by vote?
Um, yes, I'll call everybody's name, and they can either choose all or, yeah.
May I ask a question at this moment, or?
Uh, let's put the motion on the table, and then you can ask questions.
I was just trying to understand whether there was a recommended approach from the Grants Committee.
I'm going, I'm going to reiterate that. I was just asking Kay which way she wanted to do it. The recommendation, you have two choices, but the recommendation from the Grants Committee would be, one, fund all eligible applicants by dividing the total monies, $2 million, available equally between them. There is a second choice there to make it awardees based on lottery system, first come, first served basis. So, those are the two options that the Grants Team is offering you.
And the, and the choice, there's presumption or assumption is that if you did choose number two, that each person would get more money. If we say all eligible applicants, we have no idea how many that's going to be. So, there may not be as much money to give each person, but it seems more fair.
I don't know if it's going to be more fair. We discussed that because it's based on a lottery system rather than a first come, first served, within, we'd have to develop that kind of system.
No, 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 Gretchen. I'm talking about the one that says for all. The one that would be more fair is the one that funds everybody.
Exactly, which is number, which is D one.
Right, that's what I was referring to.
Okay.
Um, so, is, are you making a motion, Gretchen?
I'm making a motion from the Grants Committee that we vote on D one to fund all eligible applicants by dividing the available monies, and in this case, it's $2 million, unless we get some extra from NEA, equally between all of the applicants whose applications are found to be successful.
I second that.
Okay, great. So, I will call the roll to see who votes yes. Alma?
Yes.
Okay. Is Carla still on the phone?
She's on an airplane.
Uh, yeah, I knew she was getting on one. Okay, CC?
Yes.
Cora? Cora?
Cora seems to, to be on the phone.
I said yes.
Okay.
Did you hear me? I said yes.
I hear you now. Derek?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Rhona?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Quanice?
I have a hesitant yes, because is it possible to cap how many applications we have? Because I'm just afraid if too many people apply, we're going to come up with $100 to $500 a person, and I don't want that for individuals.
Yeah, that's what the possibility is if we all voted yes. It could be, you know, an overwhelming amount of applications. We just have no idea.
So, is it possible to cap it so that people can get like a higher funding amount? Like, I don't know, David, if you have an answer for that, but?
Yeah, well, to give some context, last year, we had a total of 502 applications from individual artists, and we were able to fund 380 based on that first come, first served. We could, I do anticipate we'll get more interest because we'll proactively advertise it. So, but even getting, you know, if we were to end up with 1,000 eligible applicants, each person would get at least $2,000. And plus, oh, I say at least because if we end up with more money, if our dedicated tax dollars trend even better than they are at the moment, or we're able to use some of the NEA dollars, that would, those would just enhance any of those. So, I, I don't know if we would get double or more than we had last year. I thought I was being optimistic by saying, oh, if we get 1,200 applications, but who knows?
This is CC. I have a question. I thought we agreed that the minimum amount for individual fellowships is $5,000. So, if we divide that by 2 million, that's 400 people.
That was for the fellowship. That was for the fellowship.
Last year, we issued $2,500 awards to individuals as part of a relief package.
Well, to Quanice's point, I, we have to, I don't want, I, 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 yeah, to Quanice's point, I, I would like the relief to be substantial enough. Like, you know,
We probably should have talked about this before I started the vote. We have enough for a quorum to pass it right now. I'm not sure what to do with these comments. If they're changing people's mind.
We, we did discuss this with both Quanice and with CC in the Grants Committee meeting. That's why we have the two choices, and that's why they were offered that way. You, I'm not sure, if we cap the number of applicants, then basically we are using option number two.
Well, okay, well, so to clarify, well, then, I, I'm not changing my vote, but I think what was not presented in the, in the presentation, Gretchen, was that I, we did talk in the Grants Meeting, and I said I would vote for a lottery if the amount was substantive, because I think on its face, a lottery isn't as equitable necessarily as just leaving it open. But if we were going to do the lottery with an, with an attached amount that was quite significant, then I would have supported that because my understanding when we had the conversation was that we were attaching a specific dollar amount to the, to the individual, like to the awards. It wasn't presented as a free-for-all. Like, I would not have necessarily voted for that where we were in a position to maybe only give people like $500.
Well, then we have to go back to that particular discussion because right now, we know we have $5 million. We might, I'm thinking, probably get more from NEA, and that would add to the $5 million. And in this particular instance, the $2.2 million.
Well, so that's two, that's two different issues. So, if there were, if there's $5 million on the table and, and there's a, there's a suggestion to set aside 2 million for individuals, I think people are on board with that. I don't, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but my sense by, based on the vote, is everyone's okay with that. The question is, how much of that are we wanting to give per person? And this is maybe where there's some disagreement, but I, I, this is meant to be a meaningful and impactful, you know, grant, or, or, you know, whatever, however we want to describe it. So, I, yeah, I, I think I'm a little bit confused that it wasn't presented that way.
The only way to do that, CC, is to top stop the number of applicants because we don't know if we're going to get a lot more money or not. So, we'd have to top stop the number of applicants, or we would have to do the lottery system. So we'd have to top stop the number of applicants, or we would have to do the, um, the lottery system.
Right, we'd have to go to number two.
If we set the amount of, the, if we set the amount like we did before at 2,500 or whatever, that tells, that will eventually run out. So that's how many people we can...
I don't want to interrupt you, but just in the interest of time and clarity, option two allows what you're talking about. That allows an opportunity to set an amount, and if there's a lottery or first come, first served, we're able to say, this is the amount we can fund because we want to do it substantively. But option number one means it gets divided period. It could be $250, or it could be $800, or it could be... We have no idea. Now, everyone voted on option one. We have, uh, that's passed, actually.
But I think everyone... Clarification.
Let me finish. Let me finish.
C.C., you're at the border.
Yeah, please don't inter... Let's don't interrupt. I think that just, you know, it's not really fair because at the end, some questions came up. You and Quanise have brought some things up that maybe you're causing other people to reconsider. So I'm willing to run through this vote again because we didn't have a good enough discussion before we started the vote, I don't think, so.
Kay, I'd like to clarify one other thing first, please. One of the problems we had last time was there were a number of people that we really wanted to get some money and couldn't because they didn't get their applications in quickly enough. Because they were at the end of the list, um, and they got nothing. And we've been talking about those in every Grants Committee meeting since then about how to address those particular people who aren't, don't have a computer right beside them, need help, more help to get an application in. So if we go to option two, then we're kind of back to that piece of it.
So let me just say, I'm going to call the roll again. I'm going to call it in a different order. And let me say, is there anybody else who wants to say anything to help? Talk about this before we vote again.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Are you talking to me, Brian?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay.
I would definitely like to weigh in a little, little something here.
Okay.
I just want this committee to take one thing into consideration. I think I have an outstanding team, and I work with an outstanding team from the OCFO with regards to getting grants processed quickly, assuming that the grant packages, when they're submitted, are complete. One of the challenges has been with getting our grantees qualified or in the system. And so the larger the number that we start to talk about in terms of the number of recipients of this funding, the, the greater the task we will run into towards the end of the fiscal year where it's in a cumbersome process, for lack of better terms. So I just want this committee to just consider that. The only thing that I would suggest, I'm not suggesting going with option A. I'm just saying, if you're going to go with option A, we have to put in some strict guidelines with regards to satisfying all prerequisites, whatever they may be, and getting them registered. We will do everything that we can to make sure that we get the grant purchase orders established and payments flowing. I'm pretty sure that we can do it, but I just wanted that to be considered in your decision.
Thank you, Brian.
Eligible means?
I'm sorry?
Was that a question, Mary Ann?
I, I'm saying, isn't that what eligible means? You don't do the eligibility after the fact. You do the eligibility before. And that's what the first one, the first, the first option says, fund all eligible applicants.
Okay, so if I may just add to that, as it pertains to eligibility, there's a criteria that's defined in the application, and then there's the other part, which is getting these vendors to submit the prerequisite documentation, which might be a W9, a master supplier form, getting them into the system, as well as a clean hand certification. So those things that tend to be, uh, tend to be a bit cumbersome or difficult for some grantees.
This is Quanise. I just wanted to say, yeah, I just wanted to say real quick, you know, it, I have no problem giving money to people. I don't know why it feels like it's framed, being framed in that way. But I, I do not want to go under 2,500. Like, that was what we gave last time. And there's a difference if there's, you know, if we end up having $500 per person. To me, that is, uh, it's not like satisfactory at all because there's a difference between an individual artist getting $500 and $5,000, especially during a global pandemic. So I just really want us to consider the fact that we are literally creating a lifeline for people right now. Um, and so I just, I just want us to think about that a little bit more. And then if we cap it, then we can give a significant amount more. I understand it's a little bit more work on the other side where you, you are, Brian. But if we can make a difference in an individual artist's life, I'd rather do that than give a $500, you know, stipend.
Yeah, Quanise, I think he's actually saying it's harder for him if we give it to more people and have less money per person than if we cap it at 2,500, uh, because that's more focus for him. Maggie, you had a comment?
I have a question. Um, Kay, thank you. For Gretchen, I, I think what I heard her say at the outset was that we would allocate this first amount, and we might then allocate some additional funding for 2022, which makes sense to me. But to address perhaps Quanise's comments and the other comments that were made, is it possible if we found that the monies weren't sufficient, given the pool, if we wanted to make it meaningful, could we then leverage some of the money that we were thinking of allocating for 2022 to make sure that the grants were significant now in light of the acute need that we know that exists?
We can formally do that.
Money.
Don't forget the NEA money, Kay.
I'm not. The other money I think Gretchen was referring to would actually be in this year, not in '22, but in '21. So, but yes, I mean, if we get extra money, we could spread it throughout the allocations, to assume.
I, this is C.C. I think we're missing the point about the extra money. That's sort of irrelevant to the discussion. Like, we, we are trying to give the biggest impact now with the money that we know we have now. Like, this was, I, I don't mean to keep bringing up this point, but this was not what we talked about at the Grants Meeting. Like, we talked about it being, there being, or my takeaway at least, is that there was a set amount that we weren't going to try and, you know, just give it to so many people that it would diminish the amount of money that we would be giving to people.
What we talked about at the Grants Committee was offering the commission two options, and the two options are listed. One, to fund all eligible applicants by dividing whatever monies we have equally between them. Obviously, if we get 2,000 applicants, they're going to get less money than if we got 100. The second option is choose the total number of eligible applicants to fund. Choose the number like we did before and determine the awardees based on the lottery system, which is what we did before.
Well, we didn't have a lottery before. We had, excuse me, we didn't have a lottery before. It was first come, first served, or however many people we could, we could fund up to the amount of money that we had. You have to explain it in the, in the, in the way that's clear so that people know what they're voting on.
It is clear. It reads right there, based on a lottery system, comma, rather than on a first come, comma, first served basis.
Um, so actually, C.C., you're saying option two. I think actually Quanise's two, give money to the community, is a matter of how much. And the option two guarantees something more substantive. I see two hands. Let me call on them. Jose? Can't hear you. You're on mute.
Sorry. Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Sorry. Um, I, I don't understand better what's going on now than when I first voted for the first option. Can we do an amendment where it would be capped at 2,500 or, you know, divided amongst the people that apply? You know, to be a little more fair with a more substantive, um, amount for artists? I mean, you know, depending if we can do that.
I think that's option two, Jose.
Okay, I am for it.
Hector?
Yeah, my question basically is the term eligible applicants. One can narrow the field if you're really talking about applicants that had been prior, previously granted money because obviously, whatever amount of grant was given may not be enough to fulfill their particular needs or their needs expanded beyond the grant. So if it were previously granted, you know, it may be that that simply helps even further because, you know, we, we can't really identify whether or not they need the extra funds. So it, it establishes also a, a, so it doesn't open Pandora's box to have so many applicants that become very hopeful, yet at the same time, you're helping those artists that have established all the prerequisites that we require. So the issue of eligibility is, makes it faster to expedite. It's a question.
That's, that's a fact. If we don't open it up to new applicants, then it makes it easier. We know the number. We can control it a lot more. But there was some thought that we didn't want to leave anybody out. So, David, do you have anything you want to add?
And, yeah, we can go either way. All I would ask is if folks opt for the second option, which is to, you know, define a total number of applicants in advance, um, that they, part of that decision is to, involves either going on a first come, first served basis, as we did last year, and drawing down the, the monies until they run out, or utilizing a lottery type system.
Right, right. So there, it's not perfect, but yet we, we have extra money that we're getting to give up. So it's a, a good problem to have to be noodling. I think we should vote again, and I don't want to rush anyone. Is there anybody that doesn't understand? Or anything else that needs to be said so that we?
Um, Kay, may I ask, just mention, I think Maggie was referencing the third part, which was the, the facilities and buildings monies that we were talking about moving, which are, because they're legislated monies, they cannot be repurposed for, um, first two. I think that's what she was referencing.
Thank you for clarifying.
Maggie, that's number three on the three-sheeter you have where it says creating space.
That's where we'll get to that. I thought you meant the NEA money or other things that come back to it.
No. That's clear to me, though, now. Thank you for clarifying. It just wasn't clear.
Can I ask? Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I, I'm a little confused now because I wasn't at the Grants Meeting. So my, my question goes to what David just said. When, if you're going to vote for number two, are we voting on a lottery or first come, first served?
I think we're voting for David and the committee to decide which way is the most fair way. But what you are voting on is an opportunity for them to decide how to control it so that the people who do get money get something substantive, you know, like 2,000, 2,500, or something like that.
So we're just voting on number two, and then the Grants Committee will decide. Is that correct?
Oh.
Well...
I mean, it, it could be if, if everybody votes for number two, or the majority votes for number two, is it possible to have, to then decide to have a second part to the vote where folks vote on whether we go?
That's right. We can decide that as a group. We can amend that second part.
If you choose number two, then you've got to decide on whether or not it's the lottery system or the first come, first served.
I agree. That's what I'm asking. That's, I agree with you.
Also decide if you want the, uh, cap to be 2,500, as Quanise has recommended. So do we amend number two so that it's more specific before you vote?
Kay, I just wanted to clarify. I didn't want the cap to be 2,500. I wanted there to be a cap on the amount of people, but I didn't want to go less than 2,500 in regards to what get, like, our money.
Okay, I, I, okay, exactly.
They were that concerned.
Gretchen, wait. Well, if we said for number two, that we chose a total number of eligible applicants to fund at an amount of $2,500 and on a lottery system, or, or on a first come, first served basis, you know?
First come, like, say that again, Kay, because first come, first served is really where we got into a little trouble last time.
Well, we have it here as an option. So maybe when people vote, they have to say that they prefer lottery or prefer first come. And, but we would add in the amount that everyone eligible would receive, uh, $2,500.
Is there a compromise somewhere where it's like, if we have a certain amount of applicants, then it goes to a lottery system? But if it's, if it's under 2,500 based on the amount of applicants per person, then we'll have the lottery. Does that make sense?
That makes sense because that way we would have, we'd be able to make an informed decision based on the number of applicants.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if, if, if we can fund all our applicants at the level of 2,500, we will do so. If we have more than, if we have so many applicants that we can't do that, we will go to the lottery system.
How will the lottery system work? I'm not, I don't understand that.
Well, wait, wait, wait. Mary, I want to stick to this one thing because I think, is what, I think what I just said is what you're proposing, Quanise, and that is that we fund all eligible applicants with $2,500 unless the number of applicants is so large that the amount of money available makes that impossible, in which case we will go to a lottery system. Is that what I understand we should be voting on?
I have a question. I'm going to back on, back up with Mary Ann. How would we define lottery system? There are a lot of different ways to do it.
I don't understand that advice.
We could use a random sampling. So any, all of the applicants who are eligible, we would use a, a random sampler that would pull their names at the first. So really, what it, if we have $2 million and we want to give everybody at least $2,500, we're talking about 800 eligible applicants. So if we had 900 eligible applicants, we would put them all, all in a large lottery barrel and pull out their names, but the electronic version of that, so.
But that's what a lot of, how you'd run a lot of...
Yes, it would be randomized as opposed to us doing it on a first come, first served basis.
My concern is that the last time, there was a lot of upset groups and organizations. And in many instances, the organizations that needed it the most either didn't come in on time or didn't get chosen for whatever reason. Uh, well, the last time it was first come, first served.
For the individuals, yes, it was first come, first served.
Now, a lottery system is going to be, again, you know, a process that could cut people out of the people who most, who most needed and should deserve it. And I think that when we start doing this, we, we're just heading into trouble. I don't know why we can't do one, why we can't fund all eligible applicants. And maybe if you want to put a caveat on, to say that, uh, in, in the event that, you know, an amendment, rather, in the event that, that, um, the number of applicants will reduce the grant below $2,500, there will be, then be, you know, the, the first 500, 800, whatever, 1,000 applicants, you know? So in other words, you don't have to do first come, first served. But if it, if it reaches a point where you have so many applicants that the amount of money they get is so little that, um, it's, it's, it's not, it's not, doesn't make sense.
Can, when we, that, that's a good, can we rephrase that? Can you type on the screen, whoever the host is, what the last statement was? Can we modify this?
I, I can't type. That's a PDF. I can't edit it.
Okay, well, then just can you type the statement so everybody knows what we're voting for? Even on another page, on something, just so we can see what we're voting for.
We can do it in the chat, Gretchen.
Okay, let's do it in the chat, then. Everybody got chat open?
I don't know. How do you, how do you open chat?
Down there by participants on the lower right-hand side.
Okay.
Okay, so if we say, fund all eligible applicants by dividing monies available equally between them, the caveat, and we'll figure out how to say this, or somebody can come up with a suggestion as to how to word it. But you, Mary Ann, you just had a good point, that if we end up, $2,500, we need to put the $2,500 in there. If we end up with so many applicants that the amount is decreased from $2,500, then we would have to revert to a, yeah, the first come, first served basis. Makes me so nervous because we got into so many problems with that last time.
So David, you said we had about 360 funded last time?
So we had five, 502 applicants, and we funded 380 at $2,500 apiece. So it was just under $1 million. We pushed that.
Okay. I mean, I feel like this is, I don't know, I just feel, it's not like an either or. I just... I mean, I feel like this is, I don't know. I just feel, it's not like an either or. I just feel like there should be a compromise. But I also do think that people should be getting more money than $2,500.
So let's, let's type, Quanice, type it in the chat thing so we can, we can modify this. We can say we can fund all eligible applicants by dividing the monies available equally between them at $2,500 each. Who's typing? Anybody typing?
I'm typing, I'm typing. So I've gotten to so many applicants that the amount falls below $2,500.
I can't see what you're typing.
Oh, I, I'll pop it in when we're finished.
Okay.
What will we do if the amount falls below $2,500 per person?
Because $2,500 means 800 applicants. I am probably 70% sure that we're not going to have 800 applicants.
Well, that'd be nice.
Is it possible to do 500, 5,000? Sorry.
So that would be 400.
That'd be 400 people.
I just typed that too, yeah.
That would be, and we had 380 last time.
That's 400 applicants.
Fund all eligible applicants by dividing all available monies equally between them. If there are so many applicants that the amount falls below $2,500 per applicant. Dot, dot, dot.
Tune in next week. So yes, if we went with a $5,000 floor, then that would be 400 folks.
Right. Now, again, I think we're going to end up with more money because of the NEA piece.
And we don't.
We don't know.
The, the NEA piece is, is an unknown factor. It's, there's a couple of meetings I've been in so far. They're formulating the, the instructions around it. And funding individuals is still something that the NEA does not do directly. So.
Yeah, but we did it before. We're going to get around that one. So let's, let's, let's not go there. Let's, let's.
Let's don't, because if we get that money, we can enhance what we've done, but we don't know.
Deeper into the list, that's all.
No. Fund all eligible applicants by dividing all available monies equally between them. If there are so many applicants that the amount falls below $2,500 per applicant, do an equal split provided it doesn't drop below 2,500, which means we'll have to come down on the number of people.
Okay.
I would again like to suggest 5,000 since we are trying to make significant recommendations.
If we do.
Based on the numbers that David just gave, that's still 400 applicants.
I think we're going to get more applicants this time than before because it.
But the same rule applies if you get 500 applicants.
And Cece, and this is completely anecdotal, but we asked the 380 folks to submit reports. And, and I know Crystal is on the call and she can probably speak to it better, but you know, the anecdotal evidence was folks, we gave them a loaf of bread and they split the loaf of bread with their neighbor. So many of these artists took the $2,500 and, and parsed it out to other artists by doing projects, you know, virtual events and so on. So I understand DC is a really expensive city in which to live. And $2,500 will not get you far. And, but a lot of artists shared the $2,500 with others.
So they then can share.
So they would share more, right?
Right.
I'm with Cece. I think we should give them 5,000. Let's do something that makes a big difference in people.
Right. But we have to be willing to know that a lot of people will fall out, so.
And like we say, hopefully we'll have some more money coming behind that and this time use it for that purpose. So. If they're, if they're taking money based on what you said and parsing it out to their friends and, and so, you know, other colleagues, so to speak, then $5,000 can go a long way, you know?
Okay, so now are we saying, so we're going to amend what's on the screen to fund all eligible applicants by dividing all available monies equally between them? If the amount that there are so many applicants that the amount falls below $5,000 per applicant?
That's what I heard the suggestion was.
Right. Yeah. Do an even split provided it doesn't drop below 2,500, which means.
We should, we should delete the last part of that.
Delete the last piece there.
So I, I would.
And Gretchen, what happens when it falls below 2,500?
Yeah, you have to finish that sentence, David.
If there are so many applicants that the amount falls below $5,000 per applicant.
Right. We have to then determine, so if we had 400 eligible applicants, great, everybody gets $5,000. If we have 600 eligible applicants, we now have to determine which of those 600 receive.
Which gets back to, are we going to buy lottery or are we going to do it first in, first come, first served?
But you could prorate it because it wouldn't go down that very much. So maybe we're going to have to come back to this. And when we find out how many applicants we've got and do some thinking.
That's what we were saying a little bit earlier. I think to be really informed, we've got to know the number of applicants we're talking about.
The, the challenge is that, you know, we're planning on rolling this out in June. I'm trying to stagger everything we're pushing out the door. And, and so if we wait, then to Brian's point, it's getting all of these folks across the finish line before the end of September.
Is it too much to suggest that if the amount falls below 5,000 per applicant, the grants committee will determine whether or not to prorate at a lesser amount or to go to a lottery system?
Oh, not lottery, first come, first served.
My, my only concern is that by the time we push this out of the door, get all of the applications in and determine who is eligible, we are going to be in July. And it, that is not enough time to get folks through the procurement process.
Remember what we went through before where it was taking weeks and weeks and weeks?
Right, right.
I think if we're not able to fund a certain number of people, that's okay. Like, that's just the nature of the grants. Like, we cannot be all things to all people. If we get 500 applicants and we're able to fund them at $5,000, I think that's amazing. And understanding that there are going to be people left out, like, there's always going to be people left out. Like, we've never been able to fund every single applicant that we get. I, I'm, I'm very comfortable personally knowing that we can fund up to 500 people at this significant amount. And I, I'm sorry, we can't fund everyone, but we've never been able to fund everyone. And I, I don't think we need to bend over backwards or figure out a way to fund everyone. Like, we just simply can't.
We can't do that, we can't do that, Cece, but we've got to figure out how to help the people that need it the most, that don't have the computers in front of them, that don't, aren't able to get to the portals. Now hopefully they'll come to these workshops.
Well, yeah, we have the workshops that we didn't have before. So we've had quite a long discussion on this and I'm feeling anxious about the rest of our agenda. I think that unless there's something really pressing that someone has to say we should vote.
Okay, just, just very, because Cece has a very clear sense of this. Cece, can you recommend as part of your recommendation, what process do we fund the, you know, the applicant, the eligible applicants on a first come, first served basis or on a lottery system? Because that will help us, folks decide whether they vote for, you know, number one, which is fund everybody with the monies we have, or fund as many folks as we can at $5,000 via lottery or first come, first served.
You know, I mean, I, sorry, does someone have something to say? I, I actually don't have any skin in that game. I think I, I I think either is fine. I'm more concerned about the amount.
We, we've gone through this discussion when we did fellowship grants over and over and over again about whether, you know, it pays to give someone, you know, $500, if that really make a difference. And we found out absolutely yes, it does. So for us to be sitting here squabbling about the fact that if we give 200, $2,500, it's not going to have a meaningful effect, I think is ridiculous. Of course it's going to have a meaningful effect. It won't be everything that we want to give, but the more people we can help, the less people in the community are going to be cut out. And I don't think we should be in a position now where we're cutting out people who need every little bit of money that they can get. It's not, it, it's not going to make them rich. It's not going to solve all their problems. But it's certainly going to help. And I am all for helping as many people as we possibly can until all of this stuff is over with and people can start going back to opening up their, their galleries and opening up and performing and, 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 you know, earning a living, some sort of a living again. It's starting to happen slowly. By the time we get our.
I agree with Mary Ann. If that's the case, if we're really concerned about that, why don't we give more of the, of the leftover money to individuals? Like, why, why don't we give all 5 million to individuals? I mean, there was, there's a decision to, to separate or to, to distribute the amount. So if there is concern about helping as many people as possible, individuals, why are we even talking about giving any leftover money to organizations?
It's the same conversation we had before. We, we rationalized why we wanted to give it to some individuals because these individuals hire people, small organisms, I mean, organizations do that. They have employees. They have to help, have to pay. Same discussion.
Um, can we focus? Can, because there are two things that I've heard, two opinions. Somebody wants to give everybody something. Somebody wants to make sure there's a threshold. So we've got choice one and we've got choice two. The choice two is inserted the $5,000 per applicant. And the choices then will they be determined by prorating or by a lottery or by first come, first served?
I want, if you gave it, add that, yeah, thank you.
I think that's the discussion that's got to go into some more detail. And I would like permission to be like it is here, that the grants committee will have the opportunity to decide if we choose this, choose number two at $5,000, they will decide how the best facilitate that. So really the choice on our vote is going to be whether we want everybody to get something, whatever it happens to be. And it may not be that we get that many applications. It may be everyone gets 2,000, 3,000, who knows? We just don't know. Or we want to guarantee as best we can at $5,000 per applicant. I think that's the nut of our, our vote. And does somebody want to propose that we vote on those two choices and we'll second it and do another go?
This is Mariah. I propose.
I second the vote.
Thank you all so much. Now I'm going to call on everybody again. Quanice, do you vote for choice one? Which is everybody gets something or choice two, which is the $5,000?
I'm going to say two, 5,000.
Okay. Stacy? Do you vote on choice one or two? One is everybody getting something, two is $5,000 threshold. Stacy, I can't hear you through voting.
Because I'm trying to, I, I, I don't.
You're thinking.
Yeah, can you come back to me?
I can come back to you. Rona, Rona? Do you vote for one, something for everyone, or two? $5,000 threshold.
Two.
Thank you. Mary Ann, do you vote on one, something for everyone, or two?
One.
Okay. Mariah, do you vote on one, something for everybody, or two? Threshold.
Two.
Maggie, do you vote on one or two?
I'd like to help as many people as we can. I'm voting for one.
Kimber, do you vote on one, help as many as possible, or two, a threshold of that?
One.
Hector, do you vote on a threshold of 5,000, which is number two, or one, which is something for everyone?
For one, help as many people as possible.
Okay. Jose, do you vote on number one?
Yeah, vote for number one, help as many people as possible.
Okay. Gretchen?
I vote for one.
I beg your pardon?
I vote for one, help every, as many people as we can.
Okay. Derek, do you vote for one or two?
One.
And when I say one or two, if anyone needs clarification, I'll, we'll give it to you. Cora, do you vote for one or two?
I vote for two. I think you ought to give people enough money to make a difference.
Cece, do you vote for one or two?
Two, please.
Carl is on a plane. Almond, do you vote for one or two?
One.
One, okay. And Stacy? One or two?
I'm going to vote for two, for giving.
Okay. And is, have I missed anyone? Okay, the ones have it eight to six. Thank you all very much for the vote.
Thank you.
That was tough, but it was a good discussion. And I think, uh, you know, we'll see how it turns out.
And those, and those who, and those who didn't vote for it, I really feel strongly that we're going to get quite a bit of money here. I really do.
Yeah. But I also, this is Quanice. I also want us to think about breadth and depth versus just scattering. So as we continue to vote on things for people, we really want to make an impact. You know, I just really want us to think about breadth for future funding.
Okay, so we have more to talk about, Gretchen.
Yes, we have another 2.5 we need to vote on. This is the enhancements for organizational relief, which is at the second portion of, there it is. Thank you. We will issue. Pardon? Okay, we will issue 174 enhancements to current organizational grantees in FY21. Please read that next sentence carefully so that you see which ones we're talking about. AHA, EOR, FabTF, FabR, GOS, non-NACA and PEF programs. Organizations with multiple grants will receive an enhancement based on the percentage of their highest award. Now, and remember all this as we flip to the next sheet. In previous years, we have issued enhancements as flat percentages. We propose a tiered approach wherein enhancements are based on organizational size, i.e. smaller organizations that tend to receive smaller awards or receive a larger percentage of enhancement dollars. So we're flipping things here. Enhancements would be issued with second FY21 payments in May or June. And the scenario below assumes that the CH money, CH, CAH monies would fund the cohort entirely in the amount of 2.5 million dollars, unless we get some other monies. Um, if we go to the next section that has the, ah, that one. When I said we're flipping things, what we're doing is giving 55%, ooh, of the enhancements to the, the smaller budgeted organizations between 15 and 200,000. Whereas the 5 million plus would only get 15%.
The 15% would only, would get 5,000.
The, um, organizations whose budgets are within the 5 million plus, their enhancement could only be 15%. And of the ones that we have of the total, the next chart below, it breaks down the number by ward. I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Yes?
What? Did anybody have any questions? I, I couldn't hear who was talking.
I still can't.
Let's make sure we understand this carefully before we vote this time.
Yeah, let's go back to the first part. The first part says, we have enhancements of 2.5 million dollars. And we want to issue 174 enhancements to current organizational grantees in FY21. The current organizational grantees are the ones that are listed on that second line. Read it carefully, please. In B, we say organizations with multiple grants will receive an enhancement based on a percent of their highest award. In previous years, we've issued enhancements as flat percentages. We proposed a tiered approach, which is what we talked about in the grants committee meeting before last, where we give a higher percentage to the smaller organizations. So that we can help them basically. Should additional NEA relief monies become available to the agency? The grants team proposes to use those funds to supplant CAH funding in the below scenario to the extent possible. The supplanted CAH monies would be shifted towards relief grants for individuals and increase the amount of funding available in that category. Now go to the next page. What this does is by giving the smaller budgeted organizations more of the money, we are helping our efforts for capacity building.
So the proposal is to give the rest of the money as proposed to organizations. Is this a yes or no? Uh, it's not a choice between one and two, as I see it.
Yeah, there is no two here.
Yeah, there's just.
I, yeah, I second, okay.
Is there any discussion before we vote? It's on the table now.
Uh, can we ask the grants team which one? You know, what their recommendations are, which would be sort of easier or less crazy making for them, since I know that there's that to consider?
Well, it's not a choice. It's a yes or no, but go ahead.
It's a separate amount of money. It's not, it's not scenario one, which we just voted on versus this one. This is an additional 2.5 million dollars for organizations.
So basically, we had around $5 million and we took half for individuals and half for organizations to give relief to both categories. This is the category to give relief to the organizations, as I understand it.
If I may jump in, um, sorry, Kate, the.
Hran, we can't hear you very well.
Sorry, sorry. Um, I was just gonna say in response to CC's question, the, um, the plan would be for organizations, if we're able to, um, you know, get, get the, uh, thoughts of the commission today, that we would queue this award up with a second payment that would go out to organizations because it syncs up with sort of the interim report timing. And so, uh, it wouldn't be crazy because there are open POs for all organizations at the moment. So we would tack this on to, uh, that second payment.
Great, thank you.
So they can get really quickly without having to go through, um, as a new applicant.
Right, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
And CC, all of these, all of these, uh, what you see in front of you is, uh, the results of several conversations with the grants team, so this is sort of what everybody came up together, uh, up with together, so.
Is there any more que, are there any more questions?
Well, I, I just.
Maggie?
I, I can't see people because I'm looking at this thing, so I'm sorry if I don't call on you. Uh, just a second, Mary Ann. Maggie, I'm calling you.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Gretchen if she had any observations about the geographic distribution.
It's below.
It's there.
I think there was one that showed the ward. Do you want to put that back up, David?
The one below.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if Gretchen had any thoughts on that or if she's comfortable with it.
Gretchen, we can't hear you.
Sorry. I'm comfortable with that, Maggie. Um, thanks for the question, um, because it enhances the top chart.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments? Did you have, Mary Ann?
I just wanted to ask, we're giving, um, it's, uh, some organizations 55% of what their budget was, right? Previous, initially?
55% of their award, Mary Ann.
Of their award, I'm sorry.
Right.
Um, but at this stage, is that a reasonable amount of money that an organization can in fact program for and spend? You know, we've always run into this, when money comes late, organizations can't always spend everything that they get because it's too hard to.
Yeah, no, that's, you're right on, Mary Ann. Um, the, usually these dollars are pushed out in the form of general operating support. So they can use them to support. They don't have to create a new program to use the monies.
May I?
Yes.
Yeah, in addition, this money, basically what you're giving them is, is the initial grant that was given to them for this consideration generally does not necessarily meet all their operational needs. So consequently, this is just an additional help to them because generally they're not necessarily a, you know, operating at full capacity with what we're giving them. So it it is every help and I, I, I suggest that we approve this as is, because I think it's very fair and equitable. In particular, I'm very happy to see the 57 organizations that are, you know, the largest bulk are getting the highest percentage, and I think it's great. And also, the next one you're talking about, it's, uh, 92, 92 organizations are getting the bulk of the money, which I think is terrific.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. Um, so, I'll start. Alma, do you vote for this? Motion? Alma? Have you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Carl, Carl's not there. CC?
Yes.
Yes.
Cora? Cora?
Okay, what am I voting on now? I'm confused.
You're voting on money for the, uh, organizations to have an enhancement.
Okay, I vote yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes, yes, yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Mariah? Mariah?
She's muted.
Yeah, you're muted, Mariah. Uh, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Stacy?
I vote yes.
Quanies?
Yes.
Okay, and Mariah, are you unmuted? Wait, the, the, it's a vast majority, so that passes. Thank you. Thank you, Gretchen.
Okay, one last thing. We have the last item is here's a $700,000 left. We voted on the first 2 million and then we voted on the second 2.5, so there's $700,000 left. What the, um, staff has talked about, and it's a very interesting and unique concept um, that they have actually come up with, and it's a collective impact property purchase initiative for BIPOC organizations, approximately $700,000. The grants team will spend the next four to six months engaging in conversations with leaders of BIPOC organizations to identify and understand their individual and collective space needs by local and national research to identify success stories. The draft goals would be to convene organizations that identify as BIPOC nonprofit arts and humanities organizations to plan for the purchase or long-term lease of space that would collectively house their organizations and programming, to advance the real estate footprint of BIPOC arts and humanities organizations in the city with a focus on wards five, seven, and eight, and to support vibrant arts humanities hubs that activate and enliven the surrounding area. Now, there are two things we can do here. We can say, yes, we want to hold the $700,000 for this creative space initiative, or we can say we want to roll the $700,000 to FY22 and then figure out at that point where we are. Remember FY22 is not that far away. It's October 1.
Gretchen? Why, why would we roll it? Is the idea that we wouldn't have enough time without rolling it?
Because there might be other options at that point. I mean, right now, we're talking about a collective impact property purchase. Um, there could be some other things with community input. The staff wants to actually get quite a bit of community input to see what would be best for them. So I kind of wanted to leave it open in case they find out something different.
Well, can it be that we're voting? Wait a second, Mary, Mary Ann, just a second. I'll call on you. Can it, Mary, uh, can it be that this proposal is for a creative initiative for space? And if need be, it get rolled over? I mean.
Well, it needs to be rolled over anyhow, I think. I don't think we can spend this right now if it's gonna take a couple of months to do a study.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if we have to make a choice when we vote, because I think we're voting on having an opportunity to have this kind of new initiative. And it takes the time it takes, including, uh, community input, with the possibility of it rolling over.
Right, which is if, we'll just have it roll over and then the community input will determine how it's used.
Well, let's think about which way we want to say it before you vote. Hector?
Yes, my, my only question of this, this is 700,000 that we have this year. If we fund these organizations to have space to do a long-term lease, are we gonna be funding the organization really long-term? Because when you're talking long-term, you're talking multiple years in terms of leasing contracts. So i- is 700,000 enough to be able to say, I'm gonna sustain you? Make sure this is gonna be a short-lived, um, you know, lease that they're going to not have the funds to sustain next year. I, I, I just question the longevity of the funding and whether or not we're gonna put them in a situation where they're gonna make an engagement of long-term lease, but then not have the funds next year? And are we gonna take up that funding for next year and the following year and the following year long-term?
Yeah, David, do you want to address that since you and your team came up with it?
Sure, yeah, Hector, really great point. And that's why initially we were talking about pushing out small planning grants, so folks could get together and see what was possible. But then, you know, when we talked, uh, you know, the grants, uh, team talked, we just thought it was best to do that deep dig to really find, not to assume or presume what was needed by the community, but to really spend the time talking to them to get a sense of the entirety of their needs. And, and that would be, you know, a huge part of it. How do we help sustain them? Um, you know, on an ongoing basis. So that's why we just wanted to, we didn't want to, we felt there was pressure to move on it, but at the same time, we wanted to do it as, you know, right as it were.
Conceptually, it's a wonderful idea. The only, the only, the only thing that I have is if you start the whole, this train running, if you wish, and then all of a sudden, you know, you know, the vagaries of funding and having this kind of discretionary additional money is too risky to put an organization's, you know, future and sustainability at risk in, in future years. So I, I think that, I love the idea. I think it's wonderful, but I think we have to back it up with knowing that we're gonna look at this every single year as a part of our budget for those organizations that we move forward into this channel.
And that's a part of what we have to look at.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Uh, you know, um, a, a number of years ago, we had what we called incubators, where organizations shared space, shared equipment, and didn't have to buy their own expensive stuff. And, and, and this concept really, really i- is that in a sense. And it also is not, it's not just based on the money that we can give them, Hector. It's money that eventually we hope they can pool together in this concept to keep it going.
As long as there is a structure that they need to follow, that they understand. Yeah, all, all I'm saying is, you know, remember, I was on the board of Gala Theater, and Gala Theater had tremendous challenges over years for getting funding because one year an organization or foundation will fund, the next year would, and so on and so forth. And it created a tremendous amount of challenge for that organization. And I'm seeing this happening as a potential for something like this. Yes, I mean, it's a lovely idea. I think it's great. But again, even for example, for those incubators, is there going to be funding on an ongoing basis?
So Hector, if I'm. If I may jump in, this is Hran. Um, I think, I, 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 thank you for the feedback, first of all, but I think part of our thinking is to provide seed money, and we've done this under the facilities and buildings, uh, grant program. We've expanded sort of a purchasing and a planning option for that, that where that seed money, that first kind of money that, that was given out as a grant was used for uh, the down payment for the venue. We are assuming these organizations are, well, we shouldn't assume. We'll know better once we engage in conversation with them. But one of the sort of presumptions we made in thinking this through was to say folks are be, getting pushed out of their existing venues. They are paying rent of some sort or lease of some sort where they are. And if they're able to, you know, kind of come into this collective impact arrangement, and there's some money that's pumped into it one year or two years to help sustain the initial costs, that they then would be able to take up the, uh, payments of the lease or the mortgage between them. That's the hope, because I don't think we can sustain constant funding and, and being the real estate business so embedded that way either. So I think it's, it's, you know, it's something to, to keep it, you know, keep our attention on.
I think that a component of this program could be a mentorship program where they could actually be educated to go after funds. And if that, that component, to teach them how to, so they could actually go get independently their funds, that, that, that really has to be an integral component of this idea. By the way, I'm not poo-pooing the idea. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's conceptually fantastic. It, it's, it's great. And what I'm intending, I'm just saying, what components be there to sustain organizations? I come from a small, little organization, and that's, that's a, a very tough, that's a real question.
Thank you so much, Hector.
Right now, in the, in the interest of time, can we focus and say that, uh, because this is gonna take some time to study, that we vote to move the 700 uh, from FY21 to FY22? And therefore, we're going through the process of studying this idea more deeply and we'll come back to the commissioners with the more specific.
Yes, that's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, so, so you want to make that motion, Gretchen, that?
Yes, I, I move that we roll the $700,000 over to the FY22 budget to make a determination at that point as to whether or not we, um, um, whoops, where did it go? We're on the wrong page here. Am I not looking at the right thing?
You were sounding perfect.
I know, but that, it flipped.
Okay, you can talk from your head.
Yeah, um, that we, that we roll the $700,000 over to FY22 and then make a decision on whether or not a collective impact property purchase initiative for BIPOC organizations should happen.
Does anyone second that?
I second it.
Okay, any more, just, any more discussion before we vote? Okay. Quanies?
Yes.
Stacy? Everyone, remember to unmute when it's time to vote. Stacy? Rona?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose? Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek? Cora?
Quite a few people left. Do we still have Cora?
I think we do, and we have one more important vote. Cora, CC?
She left, but she said wanted to defer.
Carl, Alma? Alma, are you voting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We have 10 people voting yes. Thank you all.
Okay.
So thank you. Gretchen, I think that's the end of your report.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so now we have new business. And, uh, as you know from the agenda, our new business has to do with, uh, vote on legislation change and a proposal for new legislation. Yeah, so this proposal, which I think you've seen in the attachments that Jeff sent, has a lot of, uh, legal language, but this is the heart of it. It, uh, dissolves the percentage for the NCCAC organizations uh, and opens it up to all people applying for GOS. It changes the percentage for general operating from 28, which prior to this was for only 21 organizations, and changes it to 54%, which will be for as many who apply for GOS. And this year, we have 145 applicants already applying for general operating. Uh, if we make these changes, we were saying that all people who apply for general operating Uh, if we make these changes, we were saying that all people who apply for general operating have to competitively apply, and they have to be eligible and qualified organizations. They will compete according to budget, cohorts according to budget size. Is there a proposal to put this on the table for vote?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mariah.
And is there any discussion or are there any questions about this?
No, I just want to, this is Quanise, I just want to bring up in the Idea Committee, we did talk about what it would look like to rearrange the funding formulas because there was, uh, conversation around like, NACOC's still getting the same amount of money that they've been getting based on this, um, just without the enhancement from the City Council. So we just wanted to make sure that we are, when we move forward on this, that we are creating funding formulas that are equitable, not equal.
Uh, they will be equitable, the money will be, I mean, this is a Grants Committee, you know, decision and, and, but, uh, the idea is that, uh, when we looked at all the scenarios at different meetings, that this amount of money at fifty-four percent sort of guarantees that there'll be enough money in the pot that when it's spread out equitably for all organizations, there will be enough to be respectable to their budget size. However, it's not so very much that we've over-obligated our own budget to legis, legislate it. It still gives us, you know, other money in our Grants budget to make determinations for. So it's kind of right in that sweet spot. But yes, it will be distributed fairly among all the different applicants. From sixteen thousand to the top.
Quanise, just piggyback on that, a lot of this has to be worked out internally once this legislation is approved.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I'll, I'll help with you with that, Gretchen.
Are there any more comments? Then I'll call the vote. Alma? I support the resolution. Thank you. Cece?
She left.
Okay, Cora? Derek? Gretchen?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes, 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 sorry.
Hector?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yeah, Kay, I, I serve on the Board of, um, Arena Stage, and I'm transitioning off of that three-year term in June, so I'm gonna recuse myself because they're funded.
I appreciate that. Mariah?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Rhona?
Yes.
Stacy? Quanise?
Yes.
Uh, that's still, uh, enough, that's enough, but so thank you all. I know this ran late, we had a rich discussion on many topics, but we all understand what we voted on, all the better for it, and that passed. That's a, a major milestone for, uh, more equitable change, so thank you all so much. Maggie?
Yes, Kay, I just wanted to say, um, I, just a, a, a deep sense of gratitude to Gretchen. I know that these proposals are complicated, um, and her leadership of the Grants Committee in driving this forward. I know it took a lot of hard work, so I just wanted to thank her and other members of the Grants Committee for everything that was done to prepare for tonight's discussion.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
Maggie, Maggie, if you don't mind, I'd like to hop onto that and, and extend that same gratitude to the Grants Team. They put in so many hours of work on this, um, with David at the helm, just hammering away at these alternative scenarios. So really, really, I very heartfelt thank you for, for, you know, taking it head-on and, and thinking through the various scenarios and getting us to this point, then working with Gretchen and the Grants Team to, to get it to the endpoint. Um, thank you all so very much.
No question about that.
I want to second that, yeah.
Yeah, I think we know that this is something we've, this, well, the whole, I think Maggie was referring to the entire meeting, but, uh, most specifically, the last piece of legislation is something we've wanted to change, but do it correctly. It's taken a lot of thought to distill it down to something such a simple vote, and I appreciate all the time and effort. Um, I appreciate all of you who are still here. This meeting ran late, you never know, but it was such an important one. I appreciate the time you've given us. Uh, is there any other new business?
Kay, is the, you said the strategic planning is next Monday?
Yes, I, I, I was right to know that we would not have time on this agenda for that, too. So, yeah, we're gonna do that.
Okay, so I won't be able to attend, but I did want to say, in our focus group, I told the consultant that he should interview grants managers because he, apparently he didn't. So he said that he would, um, follow up with that. So I just wanted to check in to make sure that the grant manager perspective is brought in on that strategic plan.
Okay, we'll make sure of that before next week. I mean, we'll, yes, okay, I hear you, I heard you before, and I don't know if he's had any time to do that, but we'll talk to him about that, Quanise. Appreciate you bringing it up. Anything else? Any other new business or comments? Okay, guys, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everyone.
Adios.
Thank you, thank you.
Adios, Hiran.
Adios.
Adios, Hiran, bye.
Adios.